To speak, I mean, one for the attention.
All right, if everybody's in their place, we will go ahead and call to order the special meeting of Vallejo City Council for May 17, 2022 at 6:03. Please raise and give the pledge of allegiance to our flag led by Councilmember Do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have the call. Roll call, please.
Mayor McConnell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Verdera Liga.
Present.
Councilmembers Ariola.
Present.
Do.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
And note for the record, Councilmember Loretta Diaz and Brown are absent.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you announce the action calendar for A? And Naveed, would you please start the two-minute clock on 4A?
Vallejo Early Learning Center presentation and funding recommendation, receive presentation and requests from First Five Solano children and families to assist with $500,000 in funding to establish the Early Learning Center at Beverly Hills Elementary School site in South Vallejo. Provide direction to, one, confirm the previously allocated $160,000 in fiscal year 2122 youth initiative budget to be used toward the project. And, two, there is a correction here in the dollar amount. Return to council with a future action item to appropriate an additional $340,000 of funding by the future allocation of ARPA funding, provided such funding is received and contingent upon Vallejo Early Learning Center procuring the balance 3.5 million required for the project.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item, both in person or virtually, must either complete a speaker's card and place it in the speaker's box directly to the right of the extended dials, or raise their hand virtually by the end of the two-minute clock. Anyone submitting a card request or raising their hand virtually after the end of the two-minute clock will not be recognized. And we have a presentation on this. Natalie, I see you on screen.
Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Today, we do have a presentation from the Early Learning Center and a funding request from First Five Solano. With us this evening, we have Supervisor Erin Hannigan and Lori Ann Fernandez from First Five Solano. With that, I will go ahead and hand it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate that. Supervisor Erin Hannigan, this is so fun. This is becoming like a thing. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council, very honored today to come to you with another extremely important partnership that will increase the number of childcare slots up to 300 here in the city of Vallejo, meaning the parents of 300 young children are now going to be able to go to work because they have a location to put their child. That is going to be a quality childcare experience along with low cost. This partnership is an effort between First Five Solano, the Vallejo City Unified School District, Head Start program, as well as with a number of conversations we've had here at the city of Vallejo. And so, we are so looking forward to this opportunity to really reuse a site, a school site, in the middle of a community of concern that so sorely needs to have resources brought to them. It's very difficult to get to places, brick and mortars and other locations, if it's outside of your neighborhood and you are poor. So, we understand the value of kindergarten and preschool experiences for young children prior to starting kindergarten in their first grade. They are going to do better in school. They're going to make better community citizens, and they're going to be really smart. So, we're very excited about this opportunity for the youngest people in our community. And I've got Lorraine Fernandez here to talk about all the details.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hannigan. Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Supervisor Hannigan. And thank you, council members, staff, and members of the public. Appreciate you taking the time to hear about the Vallejo Early Learning Center and the plans that we have. So, I want to talk first about the planning process for the center. One of the priority areas that we have at First Five Solano, and we work closely with a lot of community partners on this, is addressing early childhood learning and development. A large body of research has demonstrated a multitude of short-term and long-term benefits for having quality early learning programs for our children. Children who attend early care and education programs are more likely to have the language, literacy, mathematics, executive functioning, socio-emotional skills, and ready to be ready for kindergarten. Ninety-five percent of a child's brain develops by the age of five. So, this gives us a great opportunity, a window of opportunity, to support strong beginnings. Our research shows that the challenges that children face early in life lead to lifelong negative outcomes that can include dropping out of school, incarceration, chronic health problems, and isolation within the community. So, last fall, we met with the city of Vallejo, Vallejo City Unified School District, to talk about the potential of converting the Beverly Hills Elementary School site to an early learning center. There is a large unmet need of early learning and childcare slots in our county. So, in order to determine if this was the right project for the community needs, we reviewed community data, along with multiple studies and reports. We scanned national, state, and local landscapes. We consulted with our stakeholders that include community partners, school districts, providers of services, including businesses and nonprofits, and we also consulted policymakers. We selected the Vallejo First Five Center because it provides an opportunity for expansion, leverage, sustainability, and being transformational. So, in expansion, we're utilizing an existing site to expand and renovate in order to provide what's needed in the community. Under leverage, we have other partners who are coming to the table to increase impact, including providers and funders. In the area of sustainability, the center will utilize a shared services model that will assure that the project is sustainable, which I'll talk about more in the presentation, and it is transformational. We are using this unique opportunity to support work in the community that will transform systems and transform lives. So, why is there a need for this project? In December 2019, First Five Solano commissioned a study to talk about what is going on, on the barriers of expanding the availability of early childhood education. Why do we have so many young children that aren't in early learning care or a learning environment? Found out in the study that the primary barrier is the lack of facilities to offer these programs. And due to the lack of facilities, many of our children are left out of a quality childcare and education experience. Here in Solano, we are heavily weighted with family childcare homes. They face significant challenges if they want to expand. They have to find a building. They have to find a building that's suitable for children, that has little bathrooms, outdoor play space, safe place for parents to pick up and drop off. So, that's hard enough, as you could imagine, especially with real estate in such high demand and such high prices. And then, even if they do identify a space, it's very hard for them to come up with the money that they would need to renovate a facility. So, only one of four children with working parents in Solano County have a licensed childcare slot. And only 42% of our three- and four-year-olds are in preschool. These rates are lower than the comparison counties of Contra Costa, Sonoma, and Yolo, and lower than the state overall. We really, really need to build capacity here in Solano. And those children who don't get the preschool experience are more likely to have lower third-grade reading and math scores, which is something we all talk about addressing here in Solano County. So, a little bit about the project. As Erin mentioned, we've been working with the Vallejo City Unified School District, talking about renovating the site, standing up a new center, and serving 300 children, zero to five, and their families. Erin mentioned the partners that we have. We've been engaged with them now for several months. The renovation is a one-time cost of approximately $4 million. It will take a little over a year. Our current funding commitments include $1.87 million that has been approved by the Solano County Board of Supervisors, $230,000 has been approved by Head Start, and $30,000 from the Solano County Office of Education, who will be standing up some transitional kindergarten classes. The school district is currently working with an architectural firm on the design of the project, which includes finalizing the construction documents. And this phase should be completed by August of this year, along with the renovations planned to begin also in summer. The school district is providing the site with no facility use charge. They'll only capture the costs for items such as utilities and landscaping, and those will be paid through the shared services model by the different providers who are going to be on site. Over the 20 years of this lease, that equals a contribution from the school district of over $6.5 million in $2,022. So, they're making it so that we can make it very affordable for these providers to come on site. Once the renovation is complete, the school district will lease the site to Child Start, and Child Start will hold the master lease, will sublease the classrooms to the providers, again, based on the shared services model. Ongoing costs will be paid by the providers, who pay their share of utilities, landscaping, insurance, repairs, and all of that. So, a few key details. In the 94590 and 94591 ZIP codes, you have 6,000 children, zero to five. When the Beverly Hills Elementary School closed, 91% of the children qualified for free and reduced lunch, which indicates a high need in the community. The facility has 18 permanent classrooms, four portable classrooms that have four shared bathrooms. And the bathrooms are actually going to be the largest cost of the renovation because we have to put in tiny toilets, and they have to be done a certain way for the young children. The facility also has a large multipurpose room and adjacent kitchen, which needs to be upgraded. We're going to be applying for a state grant that will help support that upgrade. There's a large outdoor blacktop area, large grassy area, along with three play structures. And there's convenient freeway access and easy drop-off pickup for the children. So, the renovations are going to include refreshing the exterior and the interior of the school, refreshing the interior of all classrooms, including new furniture, replacing K through 12 playgrounds with age-appropriate play areas, resurfing the blacktop, and adding the bathroom to the classrooms. So, as you know, First Five Solano has had some experience with standing up early childcare, excuse me, early learning site. We learned a lot in putting together the Vallejo First Five Center. What I think is really wonderful about the center is when children and families walk in there, they are so surprised. It is such a nice, nice place. And they appreciate that. They mention it often. Child Start also has experience putting together new learning areas. And they're, of course, going to move a couple of their classrooms from Virginia site. So, they're pretty happy about that because that's kind of a difficult site in some ways, they've told us. So, First Five Solano is requesting $500,000 from the city of Vallejo to support the renovation project. In addition to the funders who have committed, that I talked about, you see them on the slide, we do have other funders who are considering an investment, and we will be submitting two grant applications over the next few months to close the funding gap. The great thing about this project is it's a one-time expense. After the facility is renovated, the ongoing site cost is captured as rent to the providers occupying the site. We call it rent, but it's those ongoing costs we talked about. So, there's no further ongoing costs that need to be addressed or sustained. And I'll end by saying that this one-time leveraged funding is a sustainable and transformative project for the community of Vallejo. It will be an amazing new place for the neighborhood and for the families and for the providers looking to expand their businesses, to all collaborate to lift up the neighborhood and lift up the families that are going to be participating at the center. It's also a model for alignment for zero to five and K through 12 systems, as it includes the transitional kindergarten classrooms, which are a huge priority right now. So, thank you very much for listening. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? Will there be any preference provided to children of the city of Vallejo as compared to the county?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? I didn't hear it.
Will there be any preference given to the children from the city of Vallejo as compared to Solano County children?
Okay, thank you. Erin says yes. So, the reason I hesitated is because of where it's located, it will by nature serve Vallejo families. However, that's a very good question, and Erin says yes. But normally, families are not going to drive a significant, because they have to get to work. So, I think it's going to naturally attract Vallejo. But yes, definitely preference because Supervisor Hannigan knew that.
And going forward, how will that $4 million annual cost be provided?
So, the $4 million is the one-time cost for renovating the facility. And the way that the ongoing cost will be covered is, first of all, the Vallejo City Unified School District is not charging a big lease. They're providing the site, and the only thing they're asking for is that we backfill the funding for any utilities, landscaping, those types of ongoing costs. So, as a shared services model, each provider, so let's give an example. We have a couple of family childcare providers who want to expand to be a childcare center. They can serve twice as many children. So, one provider may take three classrooms. They will be responsible for the costs of those three classrooms. Child Start will have the master lease. They'll send them their bill for the month, and they'll pay that bill. So, it sustains itself, which we don't have very many projects like that, Mayor McConnell. And the reason why is because the school district has been very generous.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. And you certainly gave a lot more information than what was provided for us on the slideshow. So, you did actually answer a lot of the questions that I'm just going to cross off right now because you've answered them. But, and I think you answered it, so I'm going to kind of backpedal to that one. So, it's a $4 million budget.
Right.
And I came up with a $1,370,000 deficit difference.
Right.
And you alluded to perhaps other partners.
Yes.
Would fill in that gap.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, that's, that's all.
That is what we are working on. And we have, like I said, two big grant applications. One is going to the state of California. So, there has been now, with this new budget revised and to last year, a total of about $500 million that the legislators have given to, because they know, the same thing we know, there's not enough facilities for childcare in the state of California. So, there's a major construction grant that actually was supposed to come out, it hasn't come out yet, through California Department of Social Services. And that's the grant we're going to be writing for. And then, we have a couple of other grants going to some of the private funders who helped with the Vallejo First Five Center.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And I think, you know, that's how great things happen, is when you have help from all of these other entities. It's a great lesson to be learned from that.
Yes.
So, thank you.
I agree.
Seeing no other que, oh, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Great presentation. And I'd like to thank you, as well as Supervisor Hannigan, for bringing this forth. And I think that I appreciate the presentation and just talking about early childhood education and understanding that correlation to reading levels and reading levels to where kids headed and whether they end up doing something great in their future, or the chances of them going in the wrong direction. So, I guess my only follow-up would be, how do you all ensure that those providers are helping start, kickstart that reading at the center? I mean, is there any requirements? Because I think that's a good point. But then, what are you all doing? Just wondering to ensure.
That's a good question. So, the Child Start, who's going to have their four classrooms, they have a model that they've perfected over the years. Part of Solano County Office of Education's partnership and collaboration is going to be their Quality Counts program. So, First Five California funds a huge program all through the state of California for First Fives who want to participate. We are a big participator. So, they have coaches that actually go out and meet with the providers. It's predominantly the family childcare providers, but also the childcare centers. So, they're going to bring their coaches on site. So, there will be oversight in terms of the quality of the programs. That is a big deal at First Five Solano in everything we do. And that was a really good question. I didn't mention that. So, the providers will have access to those coaches, and then there will be oversight, making sure that everything is being done 100% to get the children where they need to be. The people who are directors of the center are required to go through quite a bit of education before they can even open a center. And they have to have been a center director for an entire year before they can open a new center. So, there's also some requirements from the state that help us to keep that quality very high.
Thank you. That's even better than I could have imagined.
It really is.
Really great to hear, and I think this will be a great investment in our community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
We have a person who would like to comment, and then I'll give my comments. Mr. Brian Farrell, did you want to speak on this item, I think? Oh, I see. Sorry, I misread your card. Thank you.
No further in-person speakers. We'll stop the sign-up clock for the virtual. Do we have any virtual speakers, Naveed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two virtual speakers.
Do? Okay, we'll call them each in order and give them three minutes each.
Melissa Swift, go ahead, please.
I'd like to comment on the OIR report. Are you going to be accepting?
Now, we're on 4A Early Learning Center right now. So, we'll keep you.
But are you going to be taking?
We'll keep you in the queue.
Excuse me?
We'll keep you in the line and come back to you when we get to the OIR, okay?
So, you are going to take comments for that?
Not right now.
I understand that. But later, when you have the item, you're going to take comments for that.
We will call you. Stay on the line. Okay. Naveed, is there a second speaker on 4A Early Learning Center?
Yes, David Haldane, go ahead, please.
Good evening, council. I was reading through the supporting materials for the ELC's presentation. I think this is an absolutely critical resource that we do need to support in our community, especially as part of coming back out of the pandemic. I note that their ongoing operational cost is $240,000 a year, which includes utilities, landscaping, custodial, and reception, as well as minor repairs and insurance. I would ask that the council consider allocating an additional $240,000 in ARPA funding to ensure that the center is able to operate through their first year, and these items don't go undone. Thank you.
Thank you. That will complete all of our speakers at this time. Vice Mayor, is there a motion?
I just have a question.
I'm sorry, did you do, I thought, Councilmember Do, go ahead.
Okay, and then I have a question myself as well.
I was just going to make comments. Did you want to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Question, well, first a comment. I'm glad that this is a collaboration between the school district and First Five and the city. I will support the request. My question, I have a question. So, for the ARPA funds of $240,000, is that going to come from the first phase of ARPA funds, or is it from the second phase of ARPA funds? And then, my other question is, the shared model, what I'll have, I mean, Mike answer that question first, then I have a question for you.
We're going to submit that as part of the second tran, of ARPA funding.
Okay. And how soon is that going to be available?
I don't know if I have the exact date. We expect that to happen sometime this summer.
Okay, I'm just looking at the timeline because I know that you, the opening for this is in the fall. Is that the timeline?
In the fall, they're, so it's a year project. So, the renovation should begin right around that August summer timeframe. Child Start might have the ability to get in there sooner. But for the entire project, it'll be the late summer, early fall of 2023. So, it's a one-year renovation project.
And we did propose to make the $500,000 payment in three stages. If we get the ARPA funding, we'll cut it down to two. But the proposal was to make three payments.
Okay, so the commitment from the city is $160,000 from the youth initiative budget for this fiscal year, which is general fund, correct? And then, the $240,000, which will be ARPA money made available sometime in the fall.
It's actually 340. The 240 is a typo.
That's, okay. The agenda item showed 240. So, total that we are committing is 500,000?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I was looking at the math. I thought it was my eyes. So, it was a typo. Okay, thank you for the correction. So, $160,000 from the youth fund, which is general fund, which is already in the budget. Okay, and then the $340,000 will be ARPA money, Phase Two.
That's correct.
Okay, right. So, my other question is, how do families qualify for getting and enrolling in the program? And I am familiar with Child Start.
Right.
The facility on Virginia Street is just next to the county facility. So, is that going to close, and you're going to move the kids to this site, or is that going to continue to be?
You're talking about Virginia Street?
Yes.
Yes. So, the county has asked them for, actually, we've been trying to work with them for two to three years, trying to find a new site for them. So, this is a huge blessing for them. They were ready to move. So, they will have, and so, right now, they have two regular Head Start. They're going to bring those classes over and then add the two early Head Start programs. So, they have a system that they have through their federal requirements. The family, excuse me, the family providers, family home, house care providers that are coming to make, to turn into a childcare center will operate like any other childcare center. So, people will come and make their decision whether, which center they want to go to, same as they whether they, which center they want to go to, same as they would if it was a center on the corner in the middle of town. We are working very hard to get Amontesori to come on board, and so that's how that will work.
Yes. So First Five is going to be the lead agency, and then, and is there, I'm confused on how the structure will look like.
Right.
But I know the details, you know.
Right. So I would say First Five-
Who are we giving the money to? Is it to First Five, or is it to the early?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because First Five is overseeing the renovation project. So the only transition that's going to happen is once the renovation project is complete, and that is something we know how to do, then the next stage will be Child Start having the master lease, and they then become the agency that takes care of the lease. We're right now talking with the Solano County Office of Education to talk about how we're going to have the administration run for the center and the funding for that, because you have to have someone there to keep everybody organized, and you know what that looks like. So we will continue to be involved, First Five Solano, I'm pretty sure for a while. And the other partners also are very committed. Lisette Estrella Henderson has been very involved with the project along with Debbie Peralas, and now the new director over there, Juan Cisneros, are all in, and we spend a lot of time together.
So the criteria of to get into, to enroll in the program is similar to what the Child Start Head Start program already does, or is that going to expand?
It's not.
Hold on, let me finish the question. Is that going to expand? Because you said 300 kids. And the reason I ask is because I'm familiar with early childhood education.
Right.
And the need for preschool programs for all kids, not just, well, mostly for low-income families, obviously, because those that have means will, you know, be able to pay on their own. However, middle-class families, sometimes childcare is so expensive. It's $1,000
It is expensive.
a month, and there's no subsidy for them. So, so I'm, later down the line, I'm interested in the criteria.
Right.
And that no one will be turned down, but if you're full, it's full.
Right.
And who gets priority?
Right.
Because a lot of working families are not necessarily at that income level, but they need help with childcare, but they don't get subsidy like, you know, some low-income families. So I just-
That's right.
I'm curious on how that's going to be structured so that, you know, families like low-middle-income families also have access
Right.
to affordable childcare.
I think that's a great concern. Certainly, we want every family to be able to have access to childcare. And as you shared, you know, even if you have two working parents, it's still really expensive, you know, on a, on a regular job beyond what would be considered very low or low income. It's still an expensive endeavor. Essentially, what we're going to have, though, are little businesses, right? So each of the childcare providers, these are people who either they've been in childcare and they have maybe six kids in their home, but they want to expand to have 12 kids or 18 kids. They can come to the center and rent a slot, if you will, a classroom that has these little toilets, which is that big money that we're putting up forward. And then they can, they can work on their mix, right? We want, we want to encourage those who need assistance, because that's the other piece that we're putting together, is bringing in that assistance to help offset the cost for childcare. Keep in mind, this is a new model. This is a model of providing childcare in a center that can take your children from birth up to kindergarten in one location. And it, First Five Solano, we're here as a catalyst and that purveyor of one, putting together the money to create the center itself, because this is something that requires some expertise. The ED and Megan and Michelle are excellent at being able to identify money, braid money, put it together, work with vendors on making sure that construction projects are completed. And then the other piece is, how is it run? And so it is that shared model where Head Start's going to take a big chunk of it, but then we're going to have, I think it's nine other classrooms that will be occupied by private childcare operators. So this is an economic development project also, right? Because you're taking people who have childcare in their home. And we, my children went to a home childcare center, and it takes over your house. This takes them out of their house and into a location where, on average, they're, we're estimating that their monthly rent will be about $900 for each of these classrooms. And then if you have 12 or 14, depending on what you're licensed for in terms of children to care for, that income is what's going to pay for that $900 rent, pay, pay you, pay your staff, and then put some extra money in your pocket. So in a lot of ways, this solves many different problems. It's that life cycle. Let's get parents back to work, and by doing that, we create childcare providers, and then we put those people to work. And then it's this, this cycle that will just build upon itself. And the best part about it is we're doing all of this to support young children so that they're successful when they get to school. That's what we want. We want our kids to be successful when they get to school.
Good, thank you.
And we have a big deficit in that. So it's a good question on the partnership.
Right, yeah, I'm interested in, you know, I'm sure, I'm very interested in it moving forward and it working because the shared model, I've never heard of that, but it's like co-op kind of thing, and I know several-
That's a good way of describing it. Very good.
-several daycare centers
Right.
who have, like, who are licensed for six kids are able to join together and, you know, like small businesses into one location.
Right. And thank you for mentioning subsidies. That should have come to my mind, because yes, there's a large percentage of children that are in regular childcare centers that are being helped with subsidies, and the state of California is, with the new budget revision, is also going to be giving some more help in that area.
Good. Okay, that's it for my questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
And keep us posted, and-
Thank you, we will.
I'm very interested in how it turns out. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember, do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Supervisor Hannigan and Ms. Fernandez for being here and giving this report. It was actually 2019 when I first met with you both after having attended the National League of Cities in LA and learning about early education and how important and critical it is to our youth and their success. And hearing another council member say that so often we think about, yes, we need to support our youth. It's important that they're successful, but that's what the school's for. That's their job. And in fact, our kids are only with the school district 20% of the time. That other 80%, that's all of us. And if we're not there to support them, then how do we expect them to be successful? And so here we are today. I'm just overly excited about this project, knowing that it's going to provide opportunities for 300 children that, you know, 91% of them were on subsidized or reduced lunch program prior to COVID. Who knows how they're doing today? Knowing that less than a quarter of them have access to licensed childcare facilities. So the quality of the care that they're receiving right now, we just don't know. We don't know if they're really getting that robust training that they need. And we also know that less than half of them have access to preschool. So for them to be successful in kindergarten is a stretch at best. Having the training and education for the childcare providers in that facility, having the education and resources for the families in that facility to ensure that everybody is successful, the whole family unit, and connecting the early education system to the K-12 system is really innovative and, you know, cutting-edge ideas. And it really ensures that the success of the children upon entering that system. When we, I was at National League of Cities in Washington, DC recently. I was invited by the Bezos Family Foundation to be interviewed by the Early Learning Nation about this project. They really are interested in this and want to see how it plays out in our community because it could very well be a role model for the nation on what early childhood success is. So I am extremely excited to support this item tonight, and I hope that my council colleagues will as well. Thank you.
Councilmember, is there?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I was just listening and thinking about, so I have friends that have young children, and they had access to childcare, and they really wanted to put their kids into Vallejo Public Schools, but they were so far ahead in the children that they were, and then they became bored. You know, a child that's bored is not a good thing to have in the classroom. So this is more of a comment than a question, and maybe the next time somebody from the Vallejo Schools can come. I'm just, my only concern, I mean, it's a great project. My only concern is, is this school district ready for these kids? You know, like, how are they going to deal with, you know, there's still going to be inequality of the education of the kids coming in the schools, because it's not going to address everybody. So just want to make sure, because my, my friends, they, they opted to take their, to not go to public schools. And so there's more families not sending their kids to our public school. So I just want to keep that in the back of our heads as we go forward. So if there's any way to increase this model to bring it into the schools for older kids, that'd be great. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive the presentation and request from First Five Solano. Children and families to assist with 500,000 in funding to establish the Early Learning Center at Beverly Hills Elementary School, site in South Vallejo, and provide direction to, number one, confirm the previously allocated 160,000 in the fiscal year 21, '22 youth initiative budget to be used toward the project, and return to council with a future action item to appropriate an additional 340,000, the correction, 340,000 of funding by the future allocation of ARPA funding provided such funding is received and contingent upon Vallejo Early Learning Center, procuring the balance of 3.5 million required for the project.
Thank you. Where the screen is available, please vote on your screen.
We're having issues with the voting screen.
Okay. Well, why don't we just take the roll, then?
Mayor McConnell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Verdureleca?
Yes.
Councilmembers Ariola?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Do?
Yes.
Meesner?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Loretta Diaz absent.
Thank you. Thank you all, and good luck. And we will move on to Action 4B, please. Madam Clerk, calls an LSAT item.
Introduction of an Ordinance Prohibiting the Possession of Catalytic Converters.
Okay, and Navid, would you start the two-minute sign-up clock on the catalytic converters? Is there a presentation? There is. Captain Potts, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Jason Potts. I'm a police captain that leads our Operation Bureau. Honored to be here with you all night. So tonight, we're going to discuss a proposed city ordinance that should help address the emerging increase of catalytic converter theft in Vallejo. So if approved, the ordinance will prohibit and make it unlawful to possess a catalytic converter that's not attached to a vehicle unless the possessor has valid documentation or other proof of lawful possession within the city of Vallejo. So the challenges occur because there's no city, state, or federal legislation within the city of Vallejo to define and punish catalytic converter thefts absent an identifiable victim, which is, of course, a challenge. And so this ordinance will provide the Vallejo Police Department with clearly established legal authority to protect the public and deter this criminal activity. So, next slide, Navid, please. So I don't bore you too much with this. Okay, I want to blaze through this, but what catalytic converters are is essentially they reduce harmful pollutants. And typically, there are offenders are attracted to the Toyota Priuses and the Honda Elements because they're not, the converters are still kind of intact. And so these metals that they're, that they're pursuing are what's driving this, and that's the platinum, the palladium, and the rhodium. So, next slide, please. So the number and frequency of catalytic converter thefts has risen dramatically over the last year in the city of Vallejo and around the nation. So in 2021, there were 487 catalytic converter thefts. So that was a 426% increase in 2019. So it's, it kind of trends where, you know, all these municipalities are dealing with the same sort of thing, but it was, it was pretty, pretty challenging for us here in Vallejo. And so this is also a significant increase from the 200 reported thefts during the same time period in 2020 and the 38 that were reported in 2019. So you'll see another, next slide, you'll see an illustration of what that looks like, just over the, the three-year period. Okay, Navid, next slide, please. And so the rising catalytic converter thefts can be attributed to this, you know, we talked about the platinum, the palladium, the rhodium. This is the precious metals that the catalytic converters contain. And so it makes it an attractive target, right? So this catalytic converter is easily removed from the vehicle with the use of a reciprocating saw. Doesn't require a whole lot of criminal sophistication on the part of the offenders. And candidly, some of these saws are pretty quiet. They're not as loud as you would think, and some of these folks can do it undetected in these shopping centers. And so once the catalytic converter is removed, the offenders transport it to a scrap metal where they sell it for crap, for cash. And so, yeah, just back, go back real quick. So the thieves are selling these for about 50 to about $875 a converter. And so depending on the type and the precious metal content, you know, many of these, these vehicles, especially again, the Priuses and the Elements, they're, they're kind of intact still. So that's why they're attracted to those vehicles. Next slide, please. And so the challenges are, as you see there, the unpredictable crime patterns. These thefts occur very quickly. You know, they're hard to investigate due to a lot of these have a lack of serial numbers or identifying marks on their units. And so again, currently under California law, you know, a police officer encounters this, needs to figure out who the rightful owner is to establish an arrest and, you know, the elements of this crime stolen property. So if they're unable to locate that rightful owner, then the person in possession of this catalytic converters may be released absent additional evidence of criminal activity. And so due to the lack of legislation, a lot of these, these crimes, we estimate probably 90% of them go unsolved in the city of Vallejo. And so the challenges are pretty immense. So next, next slide. And you can see the impact for our victims, right, and our citizens in the city of Vallejo. It's, it's pretty costly to have these things replaced, 1,200 to 3,500 typically. Next slide, please. And so this is some of our prevention efforts that we've done, that we've reached out to the community on, of course, public outreach, awareness, education, and social media, videos, flyers. And then this is SEPTED. So we have a SEPTED document on our website at valleopd.net. SEPTED stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And so this is just informing our community, and we've done this, and trying to target hardening, what we call target hardening. And what that means is, is making sure that you're aware where you're parking your car, are you increasing your lighting, are you putting some security stuff on in your house, all the things that make it a little bit less attractive for criminals to, to target your vehicle, especially even some of your environmental considerations, shrubbery, and again, lighting, ingress, egress, all those things are what SEPTED touches on. And then we also have a metal theft prevention documentation that we've pushed out as well with our PIO. So that's been, I think, been pretty helpful for our public. Next slide, please. I mentioned this, you know, of course, the vehicles that they're targeting are the Priuses, the Elements, and then they're looking at also trucks because they can get under these, underneath these, underneath these things pretty quickly. And so that's, that's why those vehicles, the trucks, the SUVs, and the hybrids are, are most impacted. Next slide. And so why this ordinance, you know, we want our folks to be problem solvers, and we expect them to be problem solvers, and we expect them also to build relationships with our community. So, and that touches on the relational policing stuff that we've done with the chief, and we want to continue that. And so this is also a deterrent for our catalytic converter thefts, and it puts a sanction on these, these criminal offenders as well. And next slide. So this is a recommendation before you. 7.72 is City Vallejo Municipal Code. And so we're, we're excited to get this thing over the goal line. So that concludes my, my presentation. I'll take questions.
Any questions from council members? Councilmember Ariola?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Captain Potts. Yeah, this is a crazy new thing that's going on around town. Is, where, how do you validate, how does one show ownership of a catalytic converter, converter? Does, is there a number on it that associates it with the VIN number or the car?
Yeah, that's the problem, council members, that there isn't at this point. And so some municipalities are putting VINS, they're etching VINS or some serial numbers on their catalytic converters to prevent this. And so then when we do come across it, we can actually run these and they can register it. But presently, that's not in place, and that's why we need this, because it's going to make it illegal for folks absent valid documentation to show that they're, you know, for example, maybe their car was totaled and they want to take that catalytic converter to a scrap metal themselves. This would require them to have some sort of valid documentation that it's theirs. Presently, there's not processed right now.
Okay. And, and where, where do these thieves take, take these converters?
Yeah, so to recite, to the local recycling places.
So just any old metal?
Yes, we have one on- We have one on Mare Island, we have, they're all throughout the Bay Area.
Okay. And then what, what type of penalty will be imposed if a cat thief is, not cat, but cat converter thief is caught?
You know, might be a question for the city attorney, but I believe it's a $1,000 fine.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember B. Scher?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Captain Potts, for the presentation. So in my neighborhood, we've had some catalytic converters. Luckily, ours have not been touched. But we had somebody actually have their catalytic converter stolen in the middle of the day in their driveway, and the neighbor saw, they put on the orange vests, the work vests, and so the neighbors thought it was just workers, you know, changing a flat tire. So it can happen so quickly. I'm just curious, so even though they don't have markings, VIN numbers, the recyclers obviously know they're catalytic converters, is there any sort of state law or any way that these, the people that are taking, that are buying these catalytic converters, can they be prosecuted? Or is...
Presently, I'm not aware of any, and I believe they, there's, I'm sure there's some legislations and discussions about that. But yeah, that's, that's the challenge, for sure.
Yeah, because a catalytic converter coming in, the recyclers know what they are. I mean, you know, the people that are buying the scrap metal know what they are. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there appear to be any other questions? Do we have any cards for live speakers, Vice Mayor? Okay, and the two-minute clock is now closed. Do we have any virtual speakers, Navid?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two virtual speakers.
Okay, this is on catalytic converter. Would you call them in order, please?
Yeah, David Haldane, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Council. Along the lines of what Councilmember Meesner was talking about, I think you should add to this bill that it is a misdemeanor for a business to purchase a catalytic converter without the title shown of a vehicle or a total, or say, a receipt from a mechanic's saying that it was replaced. So I guess in summary, we should add Item E under Section 7.72.010, that it is also a misdemeanor to purchase a catalytic converter without the documentation as mentioned in Item D. Thank you.
Thank you. We will proceed to our second speaker, and then we'll return to the city attorney for some clarification points. Navid, second speaker, please.
Yeah, phone number ending in 468. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. This is Adam Carr. Can you hear me, please confirm?
Yes.
Please, thank you much. So I have personally been a victim twice within the last year of catalytic converter thefts. One was an attempted theft where I interrupted the thieves but still had to get my muscular repaired. The net cost on that was over $500 out of pocket. And then the second time, very recently, out of the paid city parking lot near the ferry building. And the total repair job was $3,200. Insurance did cover most of it, but the net for me, within less than a year, I'm $850 out of pocket. So the substantial cost, but it has lingering effects, too, because now I'm much more conservative about where I might want to go within Vallejo. And I might make mention that the whole business of environmental design and being aware of your surroundings, et cetera. I purposely parked in a high-visibility parking lot, thinking that was going to be safe. And this was a busy day, daylight, my car was in the row closest to the street. So what I would say is that in addition to, I think, the excellent suggestion about putting something in the, in the ordinance about making it a misdemeanor to purchase the converters, is I think Vallejo really needs to get serious about having additional patrols on the street. And what I would say is hire security guards to go to the areas where we know a lot of thefts have occurred. Apparently, the ferry building parking lot is one of those. I've heard that from the car rental agency. Another one is Black Bear Diner, another is Outside City Sports at the Gateway Plaza. So there are things now that I'm like, no, I don't know if I want to do that because I don't want to risk my car getting hit. And oh, by the way, after the first attempt, I had a cover, a catalytic converter cover installed on my car, they were able to get their saw blade around the cover and cut the converter out even with the cover in place. So now, in round two of the theft, I had additional metal welded to the underside of my car. Hopefully, that'll prevent things. But it really, it's not just the out-of-pocket and the feeling of violation, I think that it's a drag on potential business and activity in Vallejo. It's a very serious problem. And, you know, the, the out-of-pocket expenses are not, you know, insignificant either. So I really urge you to be, make this as tough as you can because it's a big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Navid, do we have any other speakers on this point? Okay, then we'll close the speakers on this. Councilmember Dew?
Thank you. So the issue of this ordinance and the two speakers that spoke relative to someone actually purchasing or buying a used catalytic converter, the California State Legislature has already addressed that issue with a section of the California Business and Professions Code that essentially requires very strict record-keeping for the possession of one as a recycler. In the event that someone is not in possession of that, those record-keeping records, in accordance with the Business and Professions Code, they would otherwise be in violation of this ordinance regardless of whether they're the individual who took the catalytic converter off of a car or someone who received it in payment for, quote, "recycling."
Councilmember Dew?
So that brings more questions to mind. So are you saying it's already state law illegal for ALCO, for example, to purchase? No. Can you clarify, please?
So right now in California, in order to possess, in order to purchase a used catalytic converter, so you're the buyer, not the seller, you have to keep very specific records of what it is unless you are a registered recycler, a core recycler for catalytic converters. That's under the State Business and Professions Code. But unfortunately, the code does not make possession of that used catalytic converter a crime. That's why we need this ordinance to make it a crime, in this case, a misdemeanor punishable by six months in jail or a $1,000 fine or both, in order to criminalize the possession, whether you're the seller or the buyer. There's an exception in the code for the buyers that meet the Business and Professions, or the buyers, if you want to call them that, who meet the Business and Professions Code of a registered recycler. They'd be able to possess it, but no one else would.
Who?
The core, the core recyclers who have met the requirements of the state law to be a core recycler.
Okay. I don't, I'm not thinking, I'm still following that. So, okay, if somebody steals a catalytic converter, can they currently go to ALCO today and sell it?
I don't know what ALCO's licensing is currently today, so I can't answer that question. If they are appropriately licensed, then the answer to the question is potentially yes.
Okay.
But they would have to meet the record-keeping requirement, which means they have to prove that the guy who sold it to them had the right to possess it.
Okay, and so, okay. All right, so I'm very excited, actually, to see this come forward. As Chair of the Public Safety Policy Committee with Cal Cities, we were discussing many different pieces of legislation that are being floated right now around catalytic converters, and unfortunately, none of them seem to really hit the head on how to address this. Yeah, there's like one that says that the SMOG Centers will have to post and signs about etching your own, at your own expense, your catalytic converters, so, you know, definitely not helpful in preventing it from being stolen. But there were some cities in that, on my committee, that have already passed an ordinance similar as this, and they said it has been extremely effective in reducing the catalytic converter thefts in their communities. So I'm excited to see us bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, motion for holding on first reading?
Yes, I move that we introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 7.72 to the City of Vallejo Municipal Code prohibiting possession of catalytic converters.
Thank you. If we have a screen, please vote, otherwise take the roll.
Vice Mayor Verdurealika?
Yes.
Councilmember Ariola?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Dew?
Yes.
Meesner?
Yes.
Mayor McConnell?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Loretta Diaz absent.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you announce a 4C, please?
Adoption of a resolution approving the Vallejo Broadband Master Plan and Digital Equity Strategy 2022.
Okay, and Navid, would you start the two-minute sign-up for public comment on this? And are you also doing the presentation?
Yes, I have a very short presentation, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the member of the City Council. I'm Navid Ashraf, Chief Innovation Officer and IT Director. Short verbal presentation for you tonight. The item before you for your consideration and adoption is Vallejo's Broadband Master Plan and Digital Equity Strategy 2022. This document before you has been in the works since October 2021. This document, the document essentially is the rewrite of Vallejo's Fiber Optic Master Plan adopted by the City Council in 2016. The new document takes into account the digital equity component of broadband and makes it a priority for our city to ensure every citizen has an equal access to broadband. The new master plan also identifies several investment and key infrastructure opportunities to get this plan onto an implementation path. In 2021, City Council allocated $2.5 million towards broadband improvements. By adopting this master plan, we will begin to spend money in that, from that particular allocation, towards improving the broadband in our city. By having an adopted master plan with started projects and projects in the pipeline will qualify the city to attract additional federal and state dollars allocated towards broadband. And we know that there's over $62 billion allocated nationwide towards the improvement of broadband. And I'm very pleased to report to you that in Salano County, Vallejo is far, lot further than any other city in the broadband project. City of Fairfield and City of Asheville are just starting their projects, whereas the other cities, I have no knowledge that they're doing anything on the broadband side. So after adopting the broadband master plan and digital equity strategy, the following activities will begin immediately. On June 1st, an RFP will be issued to solicit bids for future public-private partnerships. The RFP will be fashioned in a way to attract multiple vendors to build, to bid and solve the digital divide problem, and hopefully, we can build a healthy fiber enterprise fund. In the fall, after the vendor selection, vendor or maybe multiple vendor selection, the construction will begin, and we'll extend our fiber network to various municipal buildings, build the resilient redundant fiber loop in the city, and also start working on some of the Wi-Fi improvements in downtown, Blue Rock, waterfront, and many other neighborhoods in our city. So again, no additional funds are being asked at this point. The $2.5 million that you guys allocated will be used to improve this, to start this project. And we'll also start pursuing the grant opportunities that will be becoming available in June-July timeframe. And then, of course, we'll also be starting some of the pilot projects that are identified in this report, fiber-to-the-home type of premise type of projects that will kind of show us how a neighborhood can be transformed. Also, there are several new construction projects on the horizon that I want to make sure that the fiber to the new development is in the works, and we work on them right away. We'll be working closely with the Planning and Development Director to make sure those entitlements are looked at, and we'll, we go ahead and start getting our fiber in those new developments. We'll also bring a dig-once ordinance to you guys in the fall. And that pretty much concludes my presentation at this point. And in conclusion, the request from staff is to adopt the resolution approving the 2022 Broadband Master Plan and the Digital Equity Strategy, and I'm available if any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember, Councilmember Ariola?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Navid. I'm sorry. Oh, you mentioned the RFQs, and you have already a list of those potential companies aside roughly, could you give me an idea of how many we're talking about? The more, the better, so we can pick the best.
Yeah. I would say at least five or six companies are already interested coming into Vallejo. And by allocating the $2.5 million that the Council allocated last year, those companies are very attractive, and they're willing to come into our city to work with us.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other council members? If not, we'll take comments from speakers. Do we have any in-person speakers, Vice Mayor? Do we have any virtual speakers?
Yes, we do have one virtual speaker, and David Haldane, go ahead, please.
Three minutes, Mr. Haldane.
Hello again, Council. I'll try to be quick. I think I agree with some of the mayor's past statements that this is an absolute priority for our community, and we need to get it executed as soon as possible. This is a wonderful intersection of community development as well as business development that will definitely both improve our citizens' lives as well as increasing their income. I direct your attention to Section 5, where you get to choose which model you engage in. And personally, I would recommend, like the report does, that you engage in Model 2, the citywide commitment model, in which we deploy the infrastructure in priority areas while working with private operations to give service to the entire city. I would also encourage you to continue to approve that $2 to $2.5 million that takes care of the key projects of expanding the city's fiber network to the whole resilient ring, of connecting the key city locations, and then also extending Wi-Fi and anchors, Wi-Fi at anchor institutions to the neighborhoods so people who can't afford internet typically at least will be able to get their life started. I'd further encourage you to look into at least assigning a staff member or maybe even hiring a consultant to make sure that this gets done. I think that we've had a lot of proposals, I think that we've been thinking about this for a long time, but it is absolutely critical that we take advantage of the Build Back Better agenda, that we take advantage of ARPA funding, and we ride this wave up while we see other cities struggling with maybe getting too big too fast or struggling with the high cost of living. So we still have our chance to make our name, but it's critical that we execute on projects like this as efficiently as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have no other speakers. Virtual?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Just to clarify, we are not adopting one model or the other tonight by adopting of this proposal, are we?
No, we're not. Those are proposed models, they're in the, yeah, and the RFP that will come forward, we're kind of leaning towards an open-access model. That means we will let multiple vendors come in and play on our fiber and monetize that asset and...
And to Mr. Malone, you will be assigning somebody, I'm sure, for this?
Navid will be heading this up, and he reports to Mr. Davis.
And I just have some requested drafting changes on Section 1.1, where it talks about the goals. I would like to add specifically that the goal will also assist small businesses in the affordable acquisition and use of city-owned broadband files. Presently, it only talks about individuals, it doesn't specify and single out businesses, which I think needs to be added in as a specific goal. In Section 1.3, it's pretty much the same thing, where we should consider a dig-once ordinance. I think I would like to remove "consider" and instruct that we will adopt a dig-once ordinance. Section 1.4, to strike "consideration," rather than "consider," will do. And then a general suggestion, when this goes into effect, I would like to see a dedicated contractor terminal in the City Hall lobby or in the planning, building department for use of those contractors when they're processing and applying for planning and building interfaces so that there's a dedicated terminal for licensee, licensed contractors. I think it'll greatly expedite the moving of business through that division. And then when we get to the resolutions, I have three suggested changes in the "whereas's." So is there any, are there any other comments from council members? Okay, then, Madam, Vice Mayor, if you would present the resolution with the additional changes on the first "whereas," to specify that it'll be available to residences and add the words "and businesses." On the seventh "whereas," that will be helping for households and businesses. And on the twelfth "whereas," that they will be in specific locations, be determined in... And on the twelfth "whereas," that they will be in specific locations, be determined and added to as necessary, because otherwise we're just saying specific locations as we have them today. And this will permit the change under added circumstances as we move forward. So Vice Mayor, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I moved that we adopt resolution approving the 2022 City of Vallejo Broadband Master Plan and Digital Equity Strategy, making broadband accessibility more equitable with the added changes that Mayor McConnell mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Ariola.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Dew.
Yes.
Meisner.
Yes.
Mayor McConnell.
Yes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Virda Aliga.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Loretta Diaz-Appleton.
Okay. We'll now move on to 5A. Madam Clerk, would you announce that, please?
Progress Report on Police Reform OIR Implementation Plan Recommendation. Receive and comment on this report and presentation covering progress and activities associated with implementing the OIR, independent assessment report recommendations, implementation plan, and collaborative reform agreement with the Department of Justice.
Okay. And Navid, would you start the two-minute clock sign-up on the OIR report, item 5A? And we have a presentation by Chief Williams in person. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor McConnell, Vice Mayor Virda Aliga, and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to share an update with you on the Vallejo Police Department's progress towards implementing the OIR group's recommendations for how to improve the departments to best serve our community. But first, I would like to acknowledge that this is Police Memorial Week, and today we had a ribbon cutting for Jim Kapoo, who gave his life in service of our city, protecting and serving our city. And I'd like to acknowledge all the officers that have given their lives in protection of the Vallejo community. I would also like to acknowledge the outstanding work that our officers do on a day-to-day basis to protect us and express my deepest appreciation for all the men and women of the Vallejo Police Department. So with that, I'm going to start our, next slide, please. Here you can see our agenda for this evening. I will start by taking a step back and sharing a bit of history for those who may not be familiar with the recommendations and why we're here. Next, I'll explain the department's collaborative reform process in partnership with the California Department of Justice, since that will help explain how we define, measure, and work towards the recommendations. After that, I will walk you through the recommendations and share a progress update on each before we wrap up with the conclusion. Next slide, please. History of why and where we're here. Next slide, please. When we talk about VPD improvements and reform, it's important to pause and think about how and when all this began and why it's important. It's important to note that the Vallejo Police Department's improvement efforts go back to at least 2019. In the summer of 2019, Vallejo officials were responding to a time of transition for the city's police department. The chief of the police at the time was newly retired, and the search for a new leader was underway against a backdrop of recent incidents, including fatal officer-involved shootings that prompted public concern, outrage, and even demonstrations. Leadership within Vallejo's city government decided the time was right to take a step back to assess the department's strengths, challenges, and opportunities in a new way. The city engaged an outside consultant to conduct this assessment. The city embarked on a third-party audit by the OIR group in the summer of 2019, about the same time it started the quest for a new police chief that resulted in my hiring. In 2019, the city also began an open, community-focused chief recruitment process. That process brought me here for the challenge of an opportunity of a lifetime. And I am thankful that the community was involved in my selection and enjoy working here every day. During my first week on the job in November of 2019, I met the California Department of Justice representatives, and we have been in consistent contact since then. Next slide, please. From 2019 into 2020, the VPD's progress and improvement continued. In 2020, the OIR group published the report, The Independent Assessment of Operations: Internal Review System and Agency Culture. That report included the 45 recommendations that we'll be going over tonight. In 2020, the department also began a three-year collaborative reform agreement with the California Department of Justice, or CalDOJ. Through the agreement, CalDOJ serves as the independent reviewer of the department's implementation of the OIR group's recommendations. And we will cover that relationship in the collaborative process in detail in the following slides. Next slide, please. That brings us to today, when I am pleased to be walking you through a reflection of 2021 as well as a high-level overview of the status of the OIR group's recommendations. Next slide. CalDOJ Reform Process. Thank you, Navid. Before I dive into the update on the department's progress on each of the 45 recommendations, I want to highlight the foundational work that went into establishing a framework for how we measure progress and success in these areas. The CalDOJ uses compliance measures to evaluate whether the VPD has met expectations for substantial compliance relating to the implementation of the 45 OIR recommendations. The department worked with CalDOJ and Jensen Hughes, that's the consultant for CalDOJ, to establish two to eight compliance measures for each of the 45 OIR recommendations. These clearly defined markers give the city, VPD, and the community a clear understanding of the steps needed to achieve substantial compliance with each of the OIR recommendations. To move this work forward, CalDOJ, Jensen Hughes, and VPD hold regularly, weekly meetings to discuss the VPD's progress in fulfilling the recommendations and reforming policies, practices, and procedures. VPD has made significant progress on a number of the recommendations. Next slide, please. One important part of this effort is to implement the OIR recommendations as the efforts to review and update VPD policies relating to the OIR recommendations. CalDOJ has been working diligently with the city on this effort. As you can see in this slide, it highlights the process. The process for reviewing proposed policy changes can be described as follows. First, it's important to draft and agree upon compliance measures. City and VPD draft new policy updates. We then solicit and receive feedback from CalDOJ on the proposed update. So typically, that means the draft will be submitted to DOJ and they have 60 days to give us feedback and get back to us. Revision of the policy is appropriate. Then we solicit and receive feedback on the policy from all Vallejo Police Department members. We solicit and receive feedback from the community from the proposed revised new policy. Typically, I will also meet with my chief's advisory board so that they can review the draft policy. As each draft policy is released for community input, that draft policy will be posted on myvallejo.com for input as well. The chief of police and command staff will review the feedback received and incorporate any modifications into the proposed policy. Then we'll meet and confer with the labor unions and police association as required by the city's labor agreement and existing California labor laws. The city, department, and labor groups each reach a consensus on the policies or, if not, if no consensus can be reached, then we'll proceed to the impasse process established under California labor law. Once we do adopt the new policy, the VPD Professional Standards Division will incorporate that policy into the policy database and will publish that in our VPD manual, which will be made public for the public to review. This process outlined above, while time-consuming, results in updated new policies that, one, meet the goals and intent of the OIR group recommendations; two, provide a comprehensive review with important community and other stakeholder input; three, meet legal requirements dictated by a California labor law; and four, result in policies that serve to establish clear requirements for VPD personnel. It ensures accountability, and it serves to protect the community and VPD members. Next slide, please. Progress update. Before we dive into the OIR group recommendations, I want to point out the legend on the right side of each of the progress update slides, which we are about to cover. You can see that these align with the collaborative reform process with the CalDOJ, which we just covered. With that collaborative reform process in mind, the categories in the legend are fairly self-explanatory. I do want to point out that the category of the city implementation indicates that the department and/or city are implementing recommendations, not necessarily that the work is complete. And in fact, I would argue that many of these recommendations are in areas in which we can and should work continuously to improve, even looking beyond our current process, working with the CalDOJ and collaborative reform. Our first several recommendations from the OIR group are focused on staffing and infrastructure. And you can see here that Recommendations 2 and 3 are being implemented by the city. Regarding Recommendation 1, we are considering that in draft state, since most recently, staff has been instructed to do a feasibility study regarding a new headquarters facility that is currently in progress. I will highlight that I requested an audit of the evidence facility when I arrived in 2019. CalPOST, that's Peace Officer Standard on Training and Division, graciously accepted my request and conducted a post-evidence and property study in August of 2020. We've also worked to increase our civilian staff, as you will see in detail on the following slide. Next slide, please. Since 2020, we added a public information officer, analyst in finance and professional standards, one additional crime analyst, one executive secretary, one forensic analyst, two police clerks, one records manager, and nine police assistants. All of these civilian positions help us operate better as a department. The police assistants in particular will help patrol in our community with clearing abandoned vehicles, illegal dumping, parking complaints, evidence collection, residential burglaries, auto stuffs, vehicle accident reports, and lower-level calls that don't require a police officer. They will also be assigned to evidence property warehouse and crime scene investigation duties. Now, I need to just point out that we are recruiting, actively recruiting, for some of these positions because they're vacant, like the police assistants, the two police clerks, the forensic analyst, the executive secretary, and I believe one admin analyst we are currently recruiting for. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see that the city and department are implementing Recommendations 5 and 6, which are focused on diversity in the recruitment and promotional process. Our goal is to reflect the diversity of Vallejo as we hire and promote within the department. To work towards the goal, we have implemented a new recruitment process that actively promotes diversity and inclusion. Through our strategic process, we seek candidates from a variety of backgrounds, including ethnicity, but also on age, educational level, life experience, and more. We are proud to report that our new recruitment efforts are resulting in the hiring of a more diverse department. For example, after nine months of implementing the new recruitment process, the ethnicities of our new hires were 37% Asian, 25% two-or-more ethnicities, 25% white, and 13% Hispanic. You can compare those percentages to our recruitment efforts in 2018, which was 47% white, 20% Hispanic, 13% black, 13% Asian, and 7% two-ethnicities or more. The journey to becoming a police officer is rigorous and time-consuming. So our diversity goals are not ones that will be accomplished overnight, but I believe our efforts so far are taking us in the right direction. As we look ahead, we have already adopted the Nation 30 by 30 initiative to focus on having 30% women in our department by the year 2030. We will continue to implement our dedicated efforts to hire and promote in a way that gets us closer and closer to reflecting the great diversity of Vallejo. For background, in December of 2019, shortly after I arrived, the sworn staffing at the Vallejo Police Department was 69% white, 10% Hispanic, 8% black, 12% Asian, and 1% two-or-more ethnicity. As of December of 2021, the sworn staffing at Vallejo Police Department is 62% white, 10% Hispanic, 10% black, 15% Asian, and 3% two-or-more ethnicities. Sworn personnel were 91% male and 9% female. Next slide, please. Innovative policing models. When it comes to innovative police models, I am proud to report that we are implementing programs and policies to meet Recommendations 7 and 8. Of note, in 2020, the department launched Operation Peace, which stands for Predictive Enforcement and Community Engagement, and the Operation Peace Community Task Force. The four-part plan focused on creating policies and practices to enhance community engagement and deter crime through positive interactions and enhanced relationships with the Vallejo community. The plan also includes developing collaborative partnerships with our local, state, and federal partners in law enforcement, implementing new technology like the automatic license plate readers, redeployment of dedicated officers towards gun violence, and working with the four Cs. That's community, cops, clergy, and city council. Additionally, in 2021, the department received a grant to fund Project Hope, which stands for Harm-Focused Outreach Prevention and Education. The project focuses on youth and family services and establishes comprehensive, community-based, and equitable access to justice and services through place-based programs designed to prevent, interrupt, and mitigate violence. With the grant funding, Project Hope aims to reduce gun violence and crimes and support victims, protect the public, and build trust. Another key innovation to come is the creation of the Mobile Mental Health Response Unit from the City of Vallejo. Our community mobile mental health response unit will be designed to provide trauma-informed mental health response and social services. And by doing so, we will be able to best serve those suffering from a mental health crisis or other emergency. Next slide, please. Building on Recommendation 8. Earlier in the spring, VPD launched a new service area model in line with our relationship with policing efforts, relationship-based policing efforts. We now have four operations lieutenants to focus on specific service areas in Vallejo, north, south, east, and west. Each lieutenant is focused on problem-solving in their assigned areas and working with community members to address quality-of-life concerns and other issues. The tenants of relational-based policing are transparency, respect, engagement, building proactive, positive relationships, ensuring accountability, fairness, and consistency while building trust. I want the residents of Vallejo to know their lieutenants, and I want them to know that we will be responsive to their needs. Next slide, please. On Slide 16, you can see that the OIR group's recommendations relate to body-worn cameras. While Recommendations 10 and 11 are under review by CalDOJ, we have already started to address those issues internally. And I am pleased to report that Recommendation Number 9 is now considered complete by the Department of Justice. In December of 2019, I proposed a stricter body-worn camera policy that made body-worn camera activation mandatory. In March of 2020, the department implemented a new stricter body-worn camera policy. We also have drafted a random review policy that will be submitted to DOJ. The new policy will involve VPD lieutenants reviewing five videos per month from their teams to assess what may be working well and what may need improvement. We are currently beta-testing the Truleo Analysis Platform that will allow us to review and transcribe the audio of all body-worn camera recordings. Next slide. When it comes to officer-involved shooting incidents and critical incident reviews, both Recommendations 12 and 13 are currently in the process of gathering department and public input. The department will have a town hall meeting on June 29th to receive community feedback on this policy. While the process is underway, I want to point out a few highlights in these areas. While the process is underway, I want to point out a few highlights in these areas. The department adheres to a new officer-involved fatal incident protocol, which launched in 2020 in partnership with the Solano County District Attorney's Office. And the department has partnered with the Solano County District Attorney's Office to launch the Solano County Major Crimes Task Force. The task force mission is to provide independent oversight of criminal investigations into all uses of deadly force by law enforcement in Solano County. Next slide, please. The recommendations on slide 18 are related to the administrative review process, as you can see. Recommendations 14, 15, 16, and 17 are all in the process of gathering department and public input. The department posted this draft policy on May 11th on myvallejo.com. Residents are welcome to find more information about the policies related to these recommendations by visiting myvallejo.com. Next slide, please. Similar to the previous slide, the recommendations on slide 19 are also related to the administrative review process and are also in the process of gathering department and public input. The draft proposed policy has been available on myvallejo.com since May 11th. Residents are welcome to visit myvallejo.com, not only welcome, encouraged, because we want your input. Next slide, please. Other uses of force. Slide 20 includes the OIR group's recommendations related, related to the use of force. Recommendations 22 through 27 are all in the process of gathering department and public input. All of these are part of the use of force policy, which has already been out for, for review and corresponding outreach in the, in the community. As input is being gathered, there is some initial progress that I am pleased to share. The department adheres to a new use of force policy that was updated in March of 2020. We launched a use of force analysis dashboard, which is available on our website and is up, is updated each year. Our use of force data over the past calendar year shows that there was zero officer-involved shootings in 2021 and a decreased number of use of force. Next slide, please. Prior to 2020, there was no de-escalation policy as it relates to the use of force. Prior to March of 2020, the body worn camera policy said should activate. After March of 2020, body worn camera policy required activation. In June of 2020, I issued a special order which banned the chokehold and neck restraint. The first half of 2020 resulted in the following policy changes: mandatory body worn camera activation, the creation of a de-escalation and sanctity of life policy, and a ban on the chokehold and neck restraint policy. Next slide, please. On this, on this slide, you can see recommendations regarding complaints and allegations of misconduct. While the expectation on recommendation 29, all of the recommendations in this area have a status of proposed policy, and we are in the process of working through this with Cal DOJ. With recommendation 29, there is something that we are implementing as a current practice within the department. In February of 2021, we launched the Accountability and Transparency page, which anyone can find by visiting myvalleojpnet.net and clicking on Accountability and Transparency. There, community members can access resources and understand the policies and practices of the Vallejo Police Department. The page contains six dropdown menus where website users can read the department's various policies and manuals, read through VPD's use of force data, learn that the department's recruitment, learn about the department's recruitment and demographic data, learn more about the department's internal misconduct and disciplinary process. This also includes aggregate data on the number of complaints received. Understand the legal requirement of the department to disclose incidents and records, and their duty to inform the public of their procedures, and request a public record. Next slide, please. Slide 23 includes a recommendation about review protocols. As you can see, recommendation 33 is still in the proposed stage. There is something that Vallejo Police Department will continue to work on, together with city staff, moving forward. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see recommendations related to community outreach, transparency, and are marked as proposed policies. Before I pause on this slide, I want to also point out that the next slide includes additional recommendations regarding transparency and community engagement as well. For recommendations 34 through 39, we are working with Cal DOJ in these areas to work towards the necessary improvements to best serve our community in practice. In practice, we are doing a lot of these things currently, but what we are putting in, what we are putting in the time now to work with Cal DOJ to craft the policies that will set these things in stone for our department to follow in a standardized way moving forward. While we collaborate on these specific recommendations, I will reiterate the efforts so far in these areas that do represent improvements. The department adheres to a new officer-involved fatal incident protocol, which launched in 2020. And the department has partnered with Solano County District Attorney's Office to form the Solano County Major's Crime Task Force. Next slide, please. Slide 25 includes additional recommendations related to transparency and community engagement, where I'm pleased to report that we are making significant progress. In 2020, the department, the police, the Vallejo Police Department launched a newly, fully redesigned website to make it easier for community members to find information, learn about the department, and access important services. In June of 2020, the department established a process to include community members in the selection of VPD officers and in the promotional process. Members of the community are now included on our interview panels for new officers hiring, and on our interview promotional panels for officers testing for promotional opportunities. And we are currently exploring new processes and potential platforms to conduct regular community surveys. Next slide, please. When it comes to independent oversight and the recommendations noted in slide 26, we are also taking, making, taking significant steps forward. The department is implementing a process to obtain feedback and input from community members regarding proposed policy changes, which you have seen play out in the recent weeks and months with the town hall sessions on topics such as the proposed new use of force policy. We are also currently working with the city manager, the city attorney, to solicit, to solicit input from community regarding civilian oversight models. This item is currently out for department and public input. Residents are working to find more information, or if residents are looking to find more information, they can visit myvallejo.com. Next slide, please. In 2020, we, so we saw significant outcomes. We saw a decrease in the negative, a decrease in use of force of 33%, a decrease in claims of 40%, a dramatic decrease in the severity of injuries to subjects during arrests, while officers' injuries remain the same at about 5%. We saw a decrease in complaints by 60%, and we saw a 9% decrease in violent crime in 2021. For the first time in 20 years, no officer-involved shootings, and for the first time in at least five years, no impact weapons and no neck code or choke, chokeholds were used. We saw an increase in the positive, while during the same time, our department saw an increase in communications and transparency with the community, an increase in collaboration with our community partners. We saw an increase in grant funding to include a $900,000 Mobile Mental Health Response funding. We saw $1 million in community violence intervention funding from, for early childhood education, youth employment, and trauma-informed care services. We also received a $286,000 grant for mental health capacity building. This funding is going towards community-based organizations to help impacted communities that are disproportionately impacted by violence, poverty, and adverse childhood experiences. Next slide, please. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate that tonight is a progress update representing a snapshot in time of our ongoing work to collaborate with the California Department of Justice to implement these recommendations and improvements. We know that there is much work that remains to be done, and we are committed to continuing our forward progress towards the best possible department for the Vallejo community. An important element of these improvements will continue to be engaging with the community, gathering feedback, both as we propose new policies and strategies, and as we seek to understand if and how our improvements are being felt across the community. To keep city council and the community informed of these efforts, my goal is to share another progress update with you about six months from now and about twice a year moving forward. Next slide. With that, I want to reiterate our dedication to continuously improving in order to best serve the Vallejo community, and I would like to open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, Chief, for a very thorough presentation and not just reading from the slides. At this time, the chair will recognize the city clerk for a statement from our absent colleague, Mina Lareda Diaz.
On behalf of Councilmember Lareda Diaz, I read the following statement. I would like to apologize for not being able to be present at tonight's council meeting. I am out of the country on personnel matters. If we want to see a positive change in our police department, we must learn to work together. Accountability and transparency are taking place, perhaps not as fast as some would like, but much needed change is happening since Chief Williams' arrival in our city. We all know he is faced with major barriers. Our police department has had many flaws for decades, long before Chief Williams arrived. As you listen to tonight's presentation, you will hear many implementations that have taken place in our police department at the direction of Chief Williams. I ask that we maintain an open mind and support the work he is doing. By attacking, criticizing, and interfering with the work he is trying to do, we are asking for our police department to be run in the same manner it has been run for decades. Chief Williams, you have my support. And this is from Councilmember Lareda Diaz, District III.
Thank you very much for that statement. At this time, we'll take questions and comments from council members, if any. Otherwise, we'll go to public comments. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a in-person speaker, Mr. Brian Farrell.
We changed it again.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, and Chief Williams. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm a proud resident of Vallejo. We moved here three years ago to be near our granddaughters, and it's one of the best decisions we've ever made. For 24 years, I defended police officers sued for misconduct in state and federal court, defended scores of them, so I consider myself an expert on use of force. I am not an expert on leadership of a police department. I have studied police departments carefully for three decades. I read every story that appears in the LA Times, the SACB, Washington Post, about police incidents. It's my area of professional specialization. These changes that are underway in Vallejo today are historic. I, I can bear personal witness to that. In the last three years, I have become acquainted with 10 to 15 police department employees here, both command staff, dispatchers, and officers. I have been struck by their intelligence, their values, and their judgment. I don't know everyone, but I'm going to ask you to reflect back to several years ago. The chief touched on the origin of the OIR report, but I want to remind you that in 2018, we were essentially expelled from a risk management pool that my former employer, the city of Santa Rosa, was also a member of. Why were we expelled? Why is our deductible five times higher? Because for 20 years, although we were 3% of the population of those 20 cities, 15 to 22% of the liability payments, mainly liability, mainly police liability cases, were being paid by the other cities. So they gave us advice. They offered to intervene and help us. We didn't listen. The problem grew and grew. We had the highest rate of police shootings. We had the highest liability payments per officer. We haven't had a shooting for 23 and a half months in this city. That is evidence of major progress. Meanwhile, I want to touch on some sensitive areas where I think there's still much more room for progress. I've attended many of the rallies and protests, not because I agree with every opinion or sentiment expressed, but because I don't believe that the families have been listened to in a dignified, structured, formal, confidential way if they would agree to that. What would the agenda be? I can't tell you, but I can tell you when they're not listened to, that they will come here and express their frustration, their, their grief, and their rage. I saw this in Sonoma County. For 15 months, I was on a task force appointed by the Board of Supervisors that studied police reform, and all of the frustrations centered on our task force meetings, which were Brown Act meetings, no longer the board. And all those families came to us. We, we had them make a presentation to us, and we engaged with them. So that, that's one area where I think we can improve, and there's not time because of how comprehensive this report was to single out the many areas of improvement that are historic. We're on the right path. We need independent oversight, common ground, mightn't as far as those community volunteers are doing an outstanding job preparing a model ordinance for you, and I appreciate the work that the city attorney and others are doing to engage our community in the moment. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, for your relevant comments. Do we have any other in-person speakers? We have none others. How many speakers do we have from our virtual?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three speakers.
Three, okay. We will close the virtual sign-up at this time, and please call those three speakers in each. They will each have three minutes.
Melissa Swift, go ahead, please.
Mayor and Council, tonight you heard from Chief Williams regarding the implementation of the OIR recommendations that were presented to the city three years ago. You know, he'll popular buzzwords like 21st century policing and predictive enforcement to you and the public that VPD is in the process of reforming. But this is not a department in the midst of reform. It is in the midst of a revolt. The Police Officers Union, VPOA, of which every sworn officer except for the chief and his deputy is a member, is an organization which is still led by an officer fired by Chief Williams for threatening journalists and lawyers and circulating images of Nazi swastikas etched into VPD badges, continually criticizes Chief Williams and openly calls for his termination. VPOA has even gone so far as to take a vote of no confidence, in which 73 of 75 voting VPD officers declared that they have no faith in the leadership and management of Chief Williams. The chief and VPOA are also in conflict over basic facts. For example, the chief claims that his reforms are responsible for lower reports of use of force, while VPOA claims that use of force has dropped because there are fewer officers, low morale, and that officers should in fact be using more force. How can we possibly believe that this toxic environment in which the VPOA constantly undermines the authority of Chief Williams is one that can bring out legitimate reform to the department? How can we possibly believe that the department is serious about reform when there are deadly cops and badge vendors that continue to remain in their positions and be promoted, two of which Chief Williams promoted to oversee the new service areas he just showed you? How can we possibly believe that reform is possible when there is a civil war currently being waged inside the police department that is preventing the actual reform that the community has been demanding for years? We cannot. And this serious issue must be addressed for the sake of the community and those impacted by police violence. I call on our newly appointed city manager, Mike Malone, who oversees the police department and supervises Chief Williams, to tell the public what his plan is to restore order to the department and implement actual reforms. The community deserves to know what immediate action steps Malone will be taking to solve this serious problem. Further ballooning the VPD budget is not a solution, as the department has seen its annual budget skyrocket from $45 million in 2020 to nearly $59 million with the new budget being proposed by Malone. Council, when you selected Malone as permanent city manager a couple of weeks ago, you said he was bringing, he was helping to bring stability to the organization. That has failed to materialize, as the staff vacancy report from April shows that there are currently 190 vacancies inside City Hall with dozens of empty positions in VPD. That is more than one-third of all positions within the city, with more than 80 staff leaving just since Malone took over as interim city manager last October. Council, you chose Malone to lead City Hall, now demand accountability and action from him to actually reform the police department.
Thank you, Ms. Swift. We'll have our second speaker, please, no wait.
David Haldane, go ahead. David Haldane, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Here for the main attraction. Thank you, Chief Malone, Chief Williams, sorry, for your presentation. It was good to see a lot of the efforts that you're undertaking. I think we can all agree that what Vallejo needs to rebuild with its police department is trust, and trust is a two-way street, both from the police department and from the community. As you may be aware, I am an engineer, and engineers like to find equations for things. An equation I found useful in dealing with trust and the management of others on cross-functional teams is the trust equation. The trust equation says you take up the credibility, reliability, and intimacy that you have with someone, and you divide it by the self-orientation. And just briefly visiting those items, I would like Chief Williams in the future to think about how to maximize this equation. And the first step to that is to decrease the self-orientation. I'm not saying that you're a self-oriented individual, but when the police department puts forward projects like occupying one of the largest line items we have, it's important to remember that Vallejo residents spend $80 per resident more than San Jose residents for their police department while making half as much income. And yet, we need to build an expensive police department. You could understand why the presentation of that would show a lot of self-orientation. When we see a lot of these initiatives, a lot of them are inward-facing policies. A lot of them are focused on what is the police department doing, not necessarily what is the police department doing for the community. I'd like to take a look at the top of the equation. Self-orientation is what you divide everything by. On top, you have credibility, reliability, and intimacy. Credibility, can we trust what is said? Well, in the past, we've seen some things come out that aren't exactly true. This is where transparency is very important. So please, continue your efforts transparency. Release the badge-bending report that may be considered personnel matter. Well, maybe we can redact it and get it out. Reliability, do police officers show up when they're needed? Do they do their job? Do the Vallejo police prevent crime? That's your reliability metric. How can you do better to have the public believe that you are preventing crime, that you are keeping them safe, that when they are in the most scary and dangerous situation in their life, will they call the VPD? Or are they going to look to arm themselves and further increase the amount of guns in our society's hands? The last is intimacy. Do I trust a Vallejo police officer to be close to me? Would I let one drive my daughter to school? Would I trust one to go to my house if I was in a car accident and tell my wife the worst news of her life? These questions are what you should ask yourself. Credibility, reliability, intimacy, divided by self-orientation. Please, keep in mind that, and also the drone situation where you rewrote the policy was not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haldane. And our third and final speaker, Naveed.
Phone number ending in 468. Go ahead, please.
Hi, it's Ann Carr. Please confirm you can hear.
Yes.
Hello? Thank you much. Okay, there's no feedback when we do this. That's why I ask that you can confirm that you can hear. So I think overall, Chief Williams has been a positive for the police force and for trying to implement some reforms. And obviously, he's got very, very strong headwinds from a police force and police union that are in revolt. A couple of questions first, and then some comments. So just the easy stuff. There were 18 civilian staffing positions added, but it sounded like at least half of them are not filled, so I'm just curious as to exactly what's the total number of filled versus unfilled positions. There was a mention of the mobile mental health unit, and that it will come, and I'm wondering when. That's a very important key. And then, the one thing I will say, the big thing stand out for me is in 10 of the 45 OIR recommendations, they talk about community engagement, and this sort of leads back to David Haldane's comments about credibility and intimacy. If you're not communicating truthfully, then you're not going to have good community relations. And if there isn't the transparency and accountability, you're going to fail. And oh, by the way, when you violate truthfulness and you really ignore community input, then that's not just a one-time thing that has lasting impact, and it's very hard to get over it. So I do want to call out one thing that has eroded my own trust and confidence in Chief Williams, and that was the very unfortunate matter of how he handled the opening of the so-called care facility that he was so proud of, when actually putting it inside a police station violates the principles of care around victim protection. For starters, it politicizes the trauma of a victim to gain political points, and then the complete snafu. In fact, it was a major faux pas of announcing and then attempting to cancel at the last minute the ribbon ceremony. That's a major violation of First Amendment, and that really shouldn't even be something one would ever have to discuss with a member of the law enforcement community. So that has lasting impact. The second thing is around how the police department has handled the location for a new police station. The community has been crying about this for years now, and finally, at the very last minute, the PD did a survey, but then didn't present the results and didn't heed the results of their own survey. So I would say...
Thank you, Ms. Carr. That will complete our third and final comment. So at this time, we will return the matter to the council. Are there any questions or comments by council members? Council Ariola.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief. You know, I'm probably the most outspoken person. It's no secret, you know, I have been, I've been just a little bit pushy on my end, because I, you know, I speak for the community, and I think you know that, and, which is why I took that initiative to come out and go along with the ride-along to really get a firsthand response to some of these community members with regards to staffing and responding to, you know, a call that comes through dispatch. So I really, I really got a very clear view of what is going on on its most gutsy level, its most raw level, not the political stuff, not the recommendations and all of that, because that's all a whole 'nother kind of thing, but your everyday officer that gets in a patrol car and responds to the community. I was very impressed with Officer Reilton, whom I saw in the slideshow, by the way. It was very nice. But back to the meat and potatoes, and I think some of our commenters had already asked some of them, and you were writing notes, so I wanted to get to that 18 civilian hiring vacancy, and were, is that what's current now? You've hired 18? That was on one of the slides? Or not all of them are filled, and you need to fill in up to 18 civilian hires?
So let me just, let me go back to that slide. So when we look at this slide for civilian staffing, during the mid-year, we increased staffing for the police assistants. We also increased staffing for the police assistants with ARPA funds. That was three ARPA funds, and I believe that happened at late summer, early fall. So with the police assistants, we're currently, prior to these nine, we currently have, I believe, five police assistants throughout the department. Three of them were on patrol. One person resigned as a police assistant, and we currently have one police assistant on patrol. So when I talked about the abandoned vehicles, taking police reports that would free up officers, the police assistants would do a lot of that work. So currently, those nine positions are currently vacant. The two police clerks are vacant. The forensic analyst was added at mid-year, which is currently, we're recruiting for those positions. The executive secretary, we're doing a recruitment for, the crime analyst as well, and one of the administrative analysts. As you know, we get a lot of PRAs in our professional standards division. It went from 50, I believe, in 2018, up to over, close to 700 last year. That's one person. So I just want you to, give you an understanding of the workload that that one analyst has to do, and that's why we have to build capacity. For the forensic analyst, that's a position that will handle all the body-worn camera video and videos that we get in evidence. We don't currently have a forensic analyst, so that's an add. That's a very important position as well. That's going to help the department and our detective division. Our staffing, in terms of our lobby, is only open four days a week. We want to expand that, and that's why we're hiring the police clerks, so that we can be more responsive to the community when someone has to come get their vehicle or they need to take care of police business.
Right, no, I'm aware of the, you know, the job descriptions of them. I guess my question really centered around, the slide says that the department has increased civilian staffing, added 18 civilian staffing. So of that 18, several are not filled. So we don't have 18. You've increased it, but now there's some empty spots because of whatever reason, they're no longer there. So now you have to build back up to get to that 18, and preferably more, if possible.
So the best way I can explain it, it doesn't happen overnight. We need authorization from city council. Once that, those positions are authorized, the funding's authorized, now the positions exist, so we have to recruit for those positions. And I'm trying to explain what the outcome, or the productive side of these positions are going to do for our community. And it is focused on enhancing our service to the community and providing better capacity building internally for the police officers and police department.
Right. And then currently, what is the current roster of sworn officers, and how many of them are on leave for medical or other issues?
I don't currently have that. The authorized staffing for police officers is 131, so we, for FTEs, for a full-time employee, for sworn officers is 131.
Okay, so I guess that question goes into the HIPAA thing. So it's been three years since the OIR report was released. Is it because there are only a fraction of recommendations have been implemented out of all of the 45? And it's taken three years. Do you have a response to that?
So the OIR report was released in 2020, June of 2020?
Two years.
Yes. So your question is, how much of the recommendations have been implemented?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure of the process, why, you know, what you have to go through to get those changes that the OIR is recommended. There are 45, right?
Yes. So as I presented in the PowerPoint, council member...
I saw the ones that you are implementing have been implemented, some that the community and the department have collaborated on. Things are still in the process, so I couldn't keep up which ones actually were implemented.
Okay, so I'll just give you a broad-level overview. Three major policies have been drafted and submitted and were out for public input. One was the use of force. That covers a number of the recommendations. The other is the Critical Incident Review Board policy, draft policy, and then there's the OIS. That's the Officer Involved Shooting policy. Those cover a number of major policies that we're working on. So it's a process in terms of developing compliance measures, and those are the steps necessary for us to show the Department of Justice, who's reviewing the city and the department, that we're, that we're making substantial compliance to those. So those are currently out for input from the public.
Could I add something real quick? So if you look at the OIR recommendations, you'll see that one policy may entail multiple recommendations in there.
Okay, right, so subcategories within that one. Okay, got it. Okay, so you, as we all know, you've inherited quite, quite a handful of things, and you have done, I don't praise you enough, but it's, I'm very well aware of it, but there are still some things that are standing out, and this might very well be, you know, because I stand with the families. I have been very, very supportive of the families, and I consider them a family. So my presence here on council, I have to ask these questions, you know, because they're not getting the answers. So when you issued a public statement saying that the bent badges report was ready to be released last September, but is being withheld by the city attorney, I think we, the community, the families, need to know if it cannot, if there's some legal reason why it's zipped, it's locked, we cannot release it, that they should at least know that and the reasons why it's zipped, zipped up, locked, and put in the vault.
Hold on, Sunny. Okay, just let me interject, though. Councilmember Ariola, we've agreed to 10 minutes, and before we go on to, you're at that, let's have that question answered, and then we'll go to councilmember Brown.
So the answer to that question is, the council will receive a confidential memorandum with regard to that topic and make a decision as to how much of that confidential memorandum you do want released to the public. The confidential memorandum will describe the law applicable to the release of such records.
Okay, we'll come back to you if you have additional questions.
Thank you, city attorney. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown, 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I really appreciate it. I think that it definitely shows a lot of the challenges that we faced, as well as a lot of the accomplishments that you've had, you know, and I think that that is very important because you haven't just talked about it, you've actually done the work. You know, to me, it has been a group effort, you know, and I really would like to even start with Greg Nyoff. The first day that I was elected and we sat down, we talked about police reform and how it needed to be addressed, and the issues with civil rights and racism in this community, and most importantly, lack of voice for the Black community and minorities. And I think that looking at a senior leadership team, including Ann Cardwell, including yourself, bringing yourself in, and, you know, I remember us sitting down at the Dead Fish and talking about just this subject. And I really appreciated your conviction then, and I appreciate your follow-up now. I think that you have had an extremely hard job. On one hand, you've been the most innovative police chief we've ever had. On the other hand, quote-unquote activists have tried to assault you, called you every name in the book, called you a clown, while I've also heard VPOA calling you a number of things as well. So across the board, I mean, you know, you don't get enough praise, you get a lot of criticism, you know, and as we know, a lot of this work is done behind the scenes. It's not about who's screaming the loudest, who's saying what in front of the cameras. This work has gotten done behind the scenes, and I'd also like to thank my fellow council members, because we've sat in these meetings for years, going over these exact things. Tough meetings, but I appreciate you all. I appreciate you all's leadership on these subjects, because we've, you know, we've seen a drastic reduction in my time, and that means a lot to me. I think that as we're talking about families, you know, I represent a number of families, too, Black families, families who don't always show up to council meetings, can't show up to council meetings, aren't screaming at you, calling you every name in the book, but appreciate your efforts here. We've seen a number of police shootings down. We've seen different interaction when it comes to police, and I think that comes from policy. Not yelling, not screaming. You implemented policy, and we appreciate it, because policy's set in stone, and that will affect the numbers. I think that we've seen a reduction in gun violence across the city, which I appreciate. I remember a couple of years ago, we were going to funerals every other week. I was calling you every other week, saying, hey, can we get some more detectives on this, man? We have shootings everywhere. And somehow, you've been able to juggle all of that while doing police reform and reduce the gun violence in this community, while working with Advanced Peace, while working with cahoots, which I appreciate. I think that initial meeting we had, we were a little like, ah, how's Chief going to react to this? You took it well in stride, you understood from the beginning the real role that police, the police force plays here, which I appreciate, because when you have that mindset, the community embraces that. And I would like to thank you once again on behalf of the community. You know, many of these people can't come down here and thank you on a day-to-day... and thank you on a day-to-day basis, but they're praying for you, and they appreciate your work, you know. And there, there's a lot of families who want to see real change here. Not confrontation, not something for the cameras, not talking smack, but real change here in the community, particularly in the black community, and those who are most affected by police brutality. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Vice Member Delga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the comments of my colleague here, councilmember Brown. And, you know, we've been around at least, what, almost four years now, and I know that we, well, since the chief started with the city, you have had our, my full support. And when I only speak for myself, you've done a lot to do outreach to communities that the previous police chiefs have not done. And I do appreciate you for doing that. And the community has welcomed you, actually, at least from the Filipino-American community, because I'm very much involved with that community, as you know. I actually saw you firsthand, you know, demonstrate de-escalation techniques. And I was quite impressed. There was that big meeting a couple of months ago, and you stayed cool, you, you know, practiced those de-escalation techniques, and I was just very impressed. There was no incident. And the folks responded to nonviolent confrontations and nonviolent conversations, and you demonstrated that. The public did not see that, because we were not on TV. But that was proof that your officers, the two or three officers that were with you, I was very impressed. So I know that you continue to train your officers on those de-escalation techniques. The community town hall meetings that you did at the Filipino community on the use of force, that was very well attended. One of the big, well-attended events. There were like 50, 60 people there. I was at that meeting. I didn't say anything, I did not comment. I just stood by the side and saw the very positive interaction between you and the officers and facilitators that were present at that meeting. So thank you for that, you know, town hall meeting. And I know that there were several meetings that you held all across the city on the use of force policy, and feedback and input. The, in a, hold on, I'm looking at my page here. Page 14, I lost my page. On the, page 14 slide, I think that was, okay, recruiting and hiring, I know that that's very challenging. It's not just our city. I was watching the news last night on the challenges that many of the police departments in many cities face in hiring police officers. It's, it's all across the country, and it's not just here in Vallejo. So not many of our young people want to enter the police force, because of, as you know, the public sentiment of many of, well, the public sentiment is, does not encourage young people to be in the police force, nor in the military, because we know why, right? So perhaps, I know that we have the police academy, we have the fire academy, one of the things that may help, and I know you're busy, is working with our high schools. And I know you have a presence there, you had a presence there before COVID. And perhaps just pay a visit with, with, with the schools. It may be someone else from your department, because it'll be good for them to see a person of color, African-American police chief to, hey, you know, this is a career worth exploring. So that's one of the things that you may want to put on your to-do list, long list. And, you know, there are questions and responses that the public expects. And you do your best to respond. Your PIO off, PIO, a person responds, city manager responds. But we are being criticized for not responding. It's because the response is not something that the public don't want to hear. You respond, but it's not exactly what, what they want to hear. They want to hear something else. But, you know, we want to be transparent. You try your best to speak the truth. And, you know, we're not perfect. You're, you're a human being. People make mistakes. And recognizing that mistakes are made every now and then is, and you have, are aware of that, and you have acknowledged that. So the question I have next is police assistants. So the police assistants, how many of them are filled? And are they sworn or non-sworn officers?
So the police assistants are non-sworn professional staff, and the recruitment for the nine are not filled. And so we're recruiting for those nine positions. We currently have two police assistants in patrol that are filled. And currently, I believe, we have four in the department that are filled in other areas.
Okay. And follow-up to that is the mobile crisis, kind of cahoots model that you are proposing, that would be one of the innovative models that you're looking at to respond to folks that are experiencing a mental health crisis? So what, are those going to be police assistants too, or are they going to be civilians?
Those will be civilians.
Okay, with kind of social work, mental health experience, right?
Yes, yes, and EMT experience. We're still looking at that model. We've been working with a cahoots consultant, as we were directed by council, and he's submitted a draft report for us.
Okay, thank you. I like the idea of the new VPD service area model from northeast, south, north, southeast, west. And are these lieutenants already in place, or there will be? What, what is the timeline for, for them being in place?
They're currently in place.
Current place, okay. So, you know, a lot of folks in the neighborhoods in these four areas are very eager to help, again, crime prevention, and again, working with, with you. So I think outreach, and I know that the My Vallejo, what is that, the website, is very, very good. MyVallejo.com, is that what that is? I've actually looked at it. It's very informative. So just maybe for the city to put it out, I don't know if we have to put it on the road sign or something, on the billboard, MyVallejo.com, check it out. Because people ask, and sometimes they don't know, and I say, well, check MyVallejo.com, and you'll get more information on what's going on in the city. Okay, so, and so the police, the four police lieutenants, are they in touch, or what is their plan to get in touch with neighborhood groups?
So we had a neighborhood watch meeting here about a month and a half ago. And so what we want to do is develop the crime prevention, neighborhood watches by area within the city. We also want to develop business watches in the area with, with our lieutenants. And to begin to develop the stakeholder meetings by area. So the, the plan is to begin to develop that, and to be able to meet either monthly or quarterly with our different groups.
Okay, good, thank you. And then finally, the OIR report that was given, presented to us and to the public in 2020. And then the pandemic hit.
Yes.
It's been, what, those two years ago? So at that time, we were told that to implement the 45 recommendations, it's not going, it will take more than two years. It will take more than five years, because it will take resources, not, not just money, but manpower. So I ask for the community's patience, because it's not going to happen next year. All the 45 recommendations will take time, and it will take money. And how do we get the money? That is why we have prioritized economic development, and hoping that when economic development takes, you know, at full speed ahead, we will have some money to spend, and to designate, and reallocate, and allocate to implement those reforms. So it's, it's not going to happen in two years. I will be out of the council, and we'll still have like, half of these recommendations still needing to be implemented. So that is the reality that we all have to face. And there, there's, unless there's a flush of money from the federal government, which is not going to happen. So again, it will take time, and it will take resources. And I ask the community to be patient, and for the community to be engaged, and be involved, and give solutions. We know what the problem is. We want to hear solutions from you. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember DeW.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Williams, for this report. I echo a lot of the comments of my colleagues, and really do appreciate all that you have done so far to accomplish those recommendations. As was said, they don't happen overnight. It is a slow-moving process that, you know, takes, you know, change from, not just the community, not just our officers, but organization-wide. And it's a process. And I feel like you're doing a good job going through that process. In regards to the service area lieutenants, what types of communications are you expecting them to receive?
Well, I want the community to be able to email them or contact them with, with issues. One of the chief complaints we get is that, no one responded to me. And I don't want that. I want someone to be able to email a complaint, maybe it's a garbage complaint, maybe it's a, I guess, loud noise complaint. Whatever that complaint is, I want them to be able to email the area commanders. So if they're not receiving the service they need and expect, then I want that communication. But I also want ongoing development of leadership groups in those areas, the neighborhood watch groups, the business watch groups, the, the, the schools. I want to begin to develop those relationships, develop a monthly or quarterly meeting with those groups, so that we can begin to develop community policing in, in those areas.
Okay, and so, for example, if someone, we frequently receive calls from constituents about, you know, whatever the complaint might be. So if it's non-responsive to, to a call for service, we can refer them to, so I just want to make sure that we're not overwhelming, you know, because there's four of them. And we get 70,000 calls for service per year. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm, you know, sending them the right directions in, in order to ensure that they are getting responded to, and not setting them up, or setting our lieutenants up for a situation where they're overwhelmed, and, you know, not actually solving that problem. So, so that would be the type of thing I would, I would send them to these area lieutenants.
Absolutely. Otherwise, it comes to the chief, all the complaints. And then they go to the captain.
Yes.
Right? So we want to develop the relationships. And so that's what we're looking to do.
Right.
And by, by going to the service model, that's going to provide better service.
Yeah. And I hear all across the state, the challenges in regards to recruitment and retention in police departments. And it is a real challenge, not just here, not just in our state, but nationwide. And, you know, I'm excited to know that there is legislation going through the state right now to create grant opportunities for cities like ours for the purpose of recruitment and retention of, of public safety employees. So perhaps even dispatch would be included in that category. But I would like to see, we do have the police explorers. I would love to see more of an intentional focus on reaching out to our elementary schools, to our middle schools, to our high schools, to engage our youth, and get them excited about the careers that are right here in their own towns. And, you know, I spoke recently to some high school students, and they were really excited about the opportunity. So I know that it's something that's near and dear to a lot of our hearts, and so I'll just encourage that engagement with our youth. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Our councilmember Meesner.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for all the work you, you and your department have been doing. I know it's a lot of work. So unlike probably everybody up here, I started coming to city council in 2004. And so this is not a new issue, what we're going through. You know, and I think maybe it's just sort of remnants from being a Navy town. It's sort of been a tough town. And when I first got on council, we had an interim police chief. And he explained to me, you know, it's, we're talking about culture change. And so it's not easy for anybody, for any culture to change, let alone what you're doing here. And, you know, we had bankruptcy, and there was all various reasons why things just sort of hobbled along. And one of the, one of the first things we did for community policing is when you were hired, we went to the community. And I know Mr. Farrell was on, I think he was on the committee, as well as our councilmember Laura Diaz, and you were their choice. So I, you know, so you already have that confidence in me and in a lot of people, because you were vetted through the community. And, you know, speaking of the community, so, well, getting back to, you know, how long it's taking, we, we have to be realistic. I think council has to be realistic. There's no magic wand. We're dealing with some deep cultural issues that are also constrained by employment law, state law, federal law. There's so many things just have to be done very slowly. And as you have your legend, you showed, you know, you, you have to go through these steps. And these are required steps. You can't say, oh, we, we won't go through confer, meet and confer. Well, you have to. You, we have to do it. So to say that, you know, snap, snap, you need it done now, as a vice mayor said, you know, this is going to take five, it could take a long time. And it's, it's going to require the council, this council and future councils, to really support it by, by allocating funds to it, because it's not going to happen without funding. And I don't know, somebody said something about San Jose, we pay more than San Jose. I don't think that's accurate, but maybe because San Jose can't hire police officers either. They're, they're not, they're having serious problems. And so one of the things I wanted to ask, so you had mentioned, you've got two websites, you've got, I sort of mixed them up, but there's two. There's Valleopd.net. But if you go to the city website and click on the police department link, it'll take you to Valleopd.net. And then there's also MyVallejo. And if, and this is more of a question to Navid, is, if there's any way, because there's various police initiatives that are on MyVallejo.com, and could there be, could they be put under a header? Because right now, you just sort of click through, and, you know, whatever is the most recent. That might be a helpful way to show people what's going on. And I don't know if you, you probably can't answer right now, but just a suggestion.
Sure. Definitely, we can create a tile that can kind of compile all the police related subject into one.
Yeah, like having categories, that'd be great. That'd be really great. So, you know, I don't really have much to, more to add. I do want to say, though, you know, we hear that, you know, honestly, so let's be, I'm going to be realistic, from my own experience in life. So police can't really prevent crimes. You know, you can't present, unless you're walking around with a security guard with you all day long. So I grew up in the suburbs, and then I went to college and moved to Boston in the 80s, when it was pretty dangerous, the cities were dangerous. And I knew right away that I needed to take care of myself. You know, like, I wasn't going to carry a gun, but I did start carrying whistle. But I, you know, I was, became aware of my surroundings. And actually, what I, what it did, what I did do was make friends with my neighbors. And I was living, you know, I was a poor college student, living in, in a very poor neighborhood. And that's, and what you're talking about, this community, bringing the community together with the police, that's what's going to make our city stronger. And it's going to make people more confident of their neighborhoods. Like, I know almost everybody on my street. I just, you know, you just sort of get to know your neighbors, and that makes it just that much safer, you watch out for each other. And then having the more community policing, I think is a great, great way to help our city. So I want to thank you for all the work you've done, and we'll be interested in hearing you, your next report. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We'll go to round two. Councilmember Ariela. You got
passed. Okay, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one extra question for you, Chief. What, well, two things I wanted to mention, but what do you see as some of the roadblocks to reform? As everyone's just talking about, what's the timeframe and things like that? What do you see as some of the challenges, Chief?
Well, some of our challenges obviously are related to staffing and resources. But I would, I would think that having our unity within our community, getting all of our neighborhood associations together, getting our business watch folks together, so that we could actually have these discussions, so we can make ourselves safer. And as council, councilmember Meesner just pointed out, we're safer when we can come together and look at these issues that we have to all face. And so, but resources is a challenge as well. There's some things that we could do to protect our- as well, there's some things that we could do to protect ourselves through community policing, through environmental design, like LED lights, getting more lighting up around our businesses and on our streets, and things like that, and there's things that we can do for traffic safety, I believe, to, to, for traffic calming, and to have that kind of vision zero, you know, push. And so there's some things that we could look at, but I think it would take us all getting in the room together to have those discussions, so that we can come up with some really creative solutions that are fiscally responsible, but it will also save lives.
Chief, can you say those demographic numbers again? You mentioned it, it was, I mean, it didn't sound like that big of a difference, but I just wanted to ask, before I ask my follow-up question, just here with those.
Absolutely. I think that was. Is it slide thirteen? Navid?
And I don't necessarily need to see the slide, when I was watching, I didn't see the slide when you were saying it, so I wasn't sure there was a slide, I just, the reason I was asking is, it, it didn't sound like that big of a difference, Chief, no fault to you alls, but once again, it's, it's still, and I know, just having, you know, diversity isn't everything, because it's still how people treat each other regardless of your race, but that being said, we do want to see more diversity, what are some of the challenges to that? I mean, in regards to recruiting people of color?
So, it is our goal to be diverse and inclusive in, in the city of Vallejo, and in the police department. I think some of the challenges are obvious, that it's, 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 it's tough for police, for people to apply for a police department in this current environment, and that is challenging, particularly for disproportionately impacted communities of color. There has been a negative stigma associated to being a police officer, so I can speak as an African-American chief, there's a lot of mistrust that's existed in, in communities of color, and if we don't build trust, it's going to be hard for someone to believe, that's a profession that I want to be part of, and so that's why relationship building, and for people to see positive role models is really important, to see people like them in this profession.
Got you, Chief, I, I, sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no.
Well, one thing I was going to say is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I remember before I got on council, past administration, and at the time, just being a neighborhood organizer, and talking to a captain here, and they were talking about recruitment, and one of the things that they said is that, at the police academy, a minority graduate who's, you know, magnanimous from an urban environment, is actually at the top of the class and makes pretty good money, they can basically decide where they want to go. Would you agree with that? I mean, is that something that, as you said, there's not a lot of minorities, but would you, or do you find that those minority candidates are lower-paying, or they're getting top jobs?
Well, yeah, this is going to be my twenty-ninth year, going in my thirtieth year, bias and racism exists, systemic bias exists, it's, it's very challenging for minorities in our profession. The numbers that you were asking about, the demographics for Vallejo, it was sixty-nine percent white in 2018, it's lower, it's like sixty-two percent in 2021.
That's significant.
However, it's challenging for someone who is not in the inner circle to come into the police department. Now, we are working on that, and we teach classes on implicit bias, and we want to make everything equitable in our profession, and it should be, but it is challenging.
Got you.
And for women in law enforcement, it's also challenging, and so, you know, one of the things that I saw when I came to Vallejo, we had no women supervisors, and I went into one of our briefings, I said, that has to change, that will change, and fortunately, we, we do have a sergeant now, a female sergeant, and one of the recommendations for OIR is that we develop our women and people that are diverse in our department, and give them exposures or experiences, we develop a rotation policy for our officers, and that's all officers, but that is something that we need to be deliberate and intentional with, and so I am happy to report that we are doing that in, in Vallejo.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right. Chief, I want to congratulate you on a good presentation. I think the consensus of the council is that we recognize your efforts, and we are starting to be appreciative of the results that you are starting to realize and bring to us and to the city, and on a personal note, I know it has not been easy for you, you face a lot of entrenched, powerful opposition, and we said going into this, we said for a long time, change we must, change we shall, and I think the council is entirely united in that objective, and we will continue to support movement in that area, both with you and with our city manager, as we move forward. I don't want to go back through a lot of these things, because otherwise, we'll be here much longer. I am looking forward to the June twenty-ninth Town Hall, that should be publicized as to where it will be, and I am very appreciative of the fact that there are less officer-involved claims, officer-involved shootings from this department, and I am assuming that that's true throughout the county as well, due to the change in, in the law, and I want to call out and acknowledge the members of the families who did organize and peacefully present their grievances in Sacramento, which resulted in the change of that use-of-force law, I think we're now seeing the results of that as well. There are a number of organizational changes that I'm hoping that this council will consider, and many of them can be brought up during budget discussions, where we will need to address a number of things, including the mental health, it's my desire to see that this be more integrated with the county, since they are the mental health lead in that area, I think they have the expertise as well. One of the things I want to comment about on recruitment, it's obviously a national problem, San Francisco Sheriff Office is down a hundred and twenty-five positions they're advertising for, that's an awful lot, Alameda, Oakland is down a hundred and thirty-five, Bart Police is offering a fifteen thousand dollar signing bonus, and in our budget discussions, along with the grant proposal that councilmember Do mentioned, I would like to seriously take, have us take a look at providing a, maybe a fifteen thousand dollar bonus, but we, we try to match it in with housing, especially if there's a grant that is approved by the state legislature, and some types of conditions that, just like going to the academy, they'll spend so many years with the police force before the debt maybe is even forgiven. That way, we can possibly increase the number of people, especially in the minority community, who live in this community. So, Mr. Malone, in conjunction with our finance director, and maybe taking a look at those possible great grants coming down from the state, I would really like to see if we can tie that together and offer a comprehensive package as well. The rhetoric class in me just cannot let me leave this comment, where it was argued that we see less officer claims because we have less officers. I suppose the corollary is that if we have more officers, we will therefore have more claims, that is a logical interpretation, but it also illustrates to me that perhaps the desire of this council and of this department and of the city manager to change is not being sufficiently acknowledged, because that's a worrisome statement, and to even entertain the idea that, oh, we have more officers, we will therefore have more claims, demonstrates a fallacy in thinking, and I am particularly perturbed and worried over that comment. So I think we have more work to do. The state bar teaches discrimination, bias, discrimination, sexual harassment classes to every member, and we've done it for decades, and it takes time to sink in, particularly with people who are used to a different approach. So I think we may have to redouble in that effort, and going forward, I think we need to take a look at items that aren't particularly raised in the OIR report, such as how do we reform the practice of being a law enforcement officer? What do we do in the job description to make it more appealing, particularly here in the city of Vallejo? Do we need to create a specialized force for patrol? Because certainly, a patrol requirements are different from a detective's requirements that are dictative, different from logistics, and it's all tied together, and justice in the military, where we have specialized military occupation specialties, and maybe we need to look at that in more infinite analysis in our police as well. But overall, reflecting the comments of this council, you're doing a good job, we've all acknowledged how long it's taken, and we are very pleased with the results that are starting to show, and like all snowballs, it's picking up speed and it's getting bigger, so we'll give it some more time. Any further comments by council, if, Mr. Malone?
There was a question about the staffing and vacancies, so I just wanted to circle back and provide that information before we, we conclude. We have thirty-six sworn positions vacant right now, roughly about thirty, one non-sworn. We also have six individuals in field training, and we expect to bring in a couple new officers into field training each month in the, in the coming months. So, we are making progress, as you indicated, it does take time, but we are having people come through the pipeline.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. With that, we will conclude this item, and why don't we take a ten-minute break right now? We've been going since six o'clock, unless you want to. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought there was one, one, I was thinking there was one more item, well, I promised you eight-thirty, Mr. Malone, it looks like I didn't live up to my word. So with that, we are adjourned.